We're live.
I'd like to call this meeting to order. It's five forty-seven. Take roll call. Carolyn Harris.
Present.
Marisol Renteria.
Uh, absent.
Linda Halsted, present. Annie Graham Larkin.
Present.
Sandra Michelle.
Can you say excuse since she told you she wouldn't be here? To pass it on?
Um, yes.
It doesn't really matter unless you can get a checked on their name or anything.
Pete Skinner, absent.
Yeah.
Matthew and Logan Dogg.
I excuse Matthew, he asked if he want, if I wanted him here. I said, you can go.
And Logan Dogg.
Present.
Yeah, um, Sandra, I'd see her on Mondays sometimes, we play Mahjong. And she was, um, gonna, she would have made last Thursday's, but she.
Can't do this one, so we're sorry.
She went on a family trip. But she is looking for, you know, she, she wants to be part of this, the committee.
I think this is a good meeting to have for the future things that we wanna do towards October and stuff, so.
And if we have a quorum, we can set dates for extra meetings, right? And I think that's the most important.
You wanna do a work session or something?
Then we do a, a work session to get it done.
Yeah.
Call to the public. This is the time for the public to comment. Members of the board may not discuss items that are not specifically identified on the agenda. Therefore pursuant to A R S eight thirty, eight thirty-eight, four thirty-one oh one. Action taken as a result of public comment will be limited to requesting to study the matter, responding to any criticism or scheduling the matter for further consideration and decision at a later date. We have noted Joni Giacchino, high school student, available for paying cemetery expense. Uh, she's not available.
She's not here, but I'm guessing Joni, maybe she's just saying they're available. So I can say that I will reach out to Joni myself and. And see if I can coordinate that. And if she's like, if it's gonna be too long, um, like getting it painted before we do the tours or something.
Yes.
Then we'll, we'll get, we'll have my guys do it.
I, I like it before Labor Day, that's in September, right?
Yes, before Labor Day.
I don't know what day.
Possibly. I think, well, if you use high schools, you definitely might be able to, so.
So.
And I know somebody that needs some community service hours too.
Because we're, we're probably about, been talking about six or nine months.
Oh, longer than that.
And I, yeah, we just, I'd like to just see a work order done and get it, get it done.
Okay.
And we can let Joni know and she can round up the kids and take them over there whenever you decide it'll be a good time.
Right, and that's what, it sounds like, like you said, you wanna get this done, then I will.
Okay, thank you.
Corral those kiddos.
I, I wanna get it done, okay. The following is to be discussed, considered, and/or decided upon during this meeting. We've got approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of the Evergreen Cemetery Committee meeting held on May second, twenty twenty-four. Do I hear a motion that we approve the minutes? Carolyn. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Old business. We have a discussion on setting up a columbarium committee or a response from the city attorney. What did he say?
Uh, this is old business, so I think it'll get covered in new business. I believe discussion, possible recommend, no? Oh, man. So, yeah, we gotta make sure that old, sorry, so Lorena probably should have just transferred that onto the.
New business?
Yeah, so I'm gonna go ahead and just speak to that, cuz as you guys saw on email I shared with you. Yeah, if you wanna read that.
I have a note on that. I do have a question. Can I, is it time to ask a question?
For, for.
Where we've been talking about doing a columbarium, why are we talking money? Where are we planning on, how are we?
I imagine grants.
Grants, okay. Because I have checked with other, um, well, not a lot, but other cemeteries, and it just happens the city of Sierra Vista just had one delivered, a new col- uh, columbarium. It was, uh, sixty units, sixteen niches, but it's between thirty and forty thousand dollars.
That's not bad.
So we need to get, I don't know who does our grants or writing it, or how we do that to get those funds. And she also said that, I said, how many bids or dealers did you put out? She said one, that was all she could find, and it was a company.
Okay, I think, I think we're getting off a little bit.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay.
It's okay, cuz it's not quite related and it's not on the new agenda either, so.
Okay, sorry.
Just old business.
Thank you, okay, I won't get carried away, okay.
Yeah, I'll just, if we want, I can read the letter really quick, so we can answer that, what Joe recommends for this.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay.
No, you're fine. Just wanna, can't branch off too much, you go into buying or anything.
Oh, no, I didn't, I was just telling what I found out.
Yeah, no, it's good. We, oh, if you wanna, how about we talk about that towards member comments?
That's fine.
Yeah. Okay, um, so Joe responded to me, they can form a working group for the issue, but that working group would need to follow meeting law. You guys read it? Do you want me to read it?
Um, just, it's the same.
I'll read it for the record, how's that?
Please.
Do you have a coffee?
I don't.
Sorry about that. There you go. Let me not work.
Thank you.
Okay, so I'll go ahead and read you what I wrote, the whole thing. Hi, Joe, have a request from the cemetery committee. They'd like to know if there's a way they can form an independent group to work on the design and funding of a columbarium for the cemetery. First thought was this would need to be a work session, however, when I made that suggestion, the group did not feel they would meet often enough, or there would be enough time to get the project going. Do you have any suggestions or other options I could provide them with? Um, he said, they can work from a working group for the issue, but that working group would need to follow the open meeting law requirements if it is made up of members of the cemetery committee, i.e. a subcommittee. If they are looking for something more informal, they can have a group of citizens prepare a design and funding concept to be presented to the board. But I would recommend that any citizen group not be made of members of the board, as it would have the appearance of a potential open meeting law violation, even with less than a quorum of the board. Let me know if you have any additional questions. It doesn't help out too much.
Like, then you have to ask, oh, will you please do this for us?
Well, I mean, Joni's passionate about the cemetery.
Do the committee, right? We're the committee, like, we should do it.
I know.
Yeah.
It, it's just, like I said, we could try and do, um, work sessions, I think.
Yeah, that makes sense.
I think that makes sense.
You just, you meet and you call it a work se- you mean, you just call it a work session and you follow all these, all the rules, and I think that's doable.
And then we'll have it all lined out, what we've got to get accomplished at that special session, right?
Yeah, absolutely. Well, when you go to do it, I think that would be the right way to do it. We can have, okay, we're gonna talk about quotes, we're gonna talk about location of it, um, where the funding might come from, different designs, so I think that would, that's probably the best way to go, really. Although Joni is no longer part of the committee and she's very passionate about cemetery. So maybe she could also, but it really kinda takes it away from you guys too, cuz I know you're one of the.
Yeah, it was like, I had like, we need to do it.
Specific.
Ideas.
But like you said, and I think we all need to have the same list or a list, and all of us have input, even if it's all for the same topic. Money, you know, how to build it, everything, so that we all have all of our input on each item.
Yeah, hey, let's start, you know, maybe it's gonna take a long time, but the fact that this is the right way to do it, I'm, I'm up for it.
I think so, I think it'll be, um.
So this committee usually meets four times a year.
Mm-hmm.
It would be like, let's, you know, pop it up to twelve, you know, whatever.
Basically, yeah, like three work sessions each quarter additionally.
Start, and then you need to see. Yeah, and then just, um, I don't know, may- maybe you get a lot done and it won't be so long too.
Yeah, maybe we wouldn't take that anymore.
Yeah, cuz I mean, the work sessions, it's just part of the committee, so. No, I, it really depends, I guess. I think our biggest challenge would probably be finding the funding. I don't think it'll be hard for us to figure out what we want or what'd be the best thing there.
We do.
The funding is something though. But local first is, uh, they can offer grant writers for people that want to do different things,
Yeah.
especially if it's for a city or a nonprofit or entity or something, so. We could reach out to them and see if one of their grant writers would be interested in helping us find grants that would work towards this.
That would be wonderful, yeah.
And I've used them, so, for a big project that Logan and I are familiar with, and they've been, um, very helpful. And was that, it's called, um, Local First Arizona?
Local First.
And the great thing is the grant writer will write the grant for you.
See, that's, yeah.
And it's all free, I think you're limited to like three applications a year. I've been very pleased with the grant writer who I was assigned.
Yeah, we wanted to offer him a job to come down.
Yeah.
Down Loser, we had.
I mean, if they could give you six months or a year, then.
Yeah, I just, I just didn't have time to write it down.
Okay. And that's why, yeah, and that's why, that's what I was mentioning before, how much this Sierra Vista paid for theirs.
Yeah.
Just so we.
Oh, I'm glad, I like having that knowledge, I just didn't wanna go too far down out of this.
Right.
So, but we can talk about more member comments for sure.
Yes.
So.
Okay, so, um, item number two. Discussion on quotes for tree trimming at the cemetery.
Yes, I'm waiting on these guys. I have two quotes already, and we did this a little bit different since we were awarded the sixty-five hundred from the Bisbee Foundation. I told all three contractors, we have sixty-five hundred dollars. What will you do for that amount? So if, these two different ones, I can, I'll go ahead and read it to you right now. I don't, neither one of you are, you know, related or have any business with Oldfield or, um, By Faith Landscaping?
I mean, I know those people.
Know them, but yeah.
Yeah, not related to.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, basically, uh, for that amount, Jorge with By Faith said they could do three dead Italian cypresses, they'll remove them. Uh, remove dead tops on twelve Italian cypress, remove dead tops on twelve small cedar trees, remove six dead cedar trees and hollow away debris. So he identified, he walked through the whole area and they are arborists, I saw that on the thing too, so.
Yeah. Mm-hmm.
Um, I believe Luke is trained, I don't know if he's certified professionally as an arborist. He's very knowledgeable, has done it his whole life, but I don't know if he has that cert. So Luke bid, um, remove six dead Italian cypress, remove dead tops in sixteen Italian cypress, and remove dead tops in twelve small cedar trees. That was it. So, but it's different. By Faith has multiple guys, and he's like, I could do this job in a day and have it all done.
Yeah.
Luke will have, you know, one or two and take a little longer, maybe.
And then Luke doesn't haul away?
Oh, he, usually, uh, depends on if he wants it or not.
So that, I mean, this guy specifically said that, that's a big part of it too.
Yes, yeah, they will. It is, yeah.
And so, if my short-term memory is correct, By Faith is gonna do quite a few more services.
Yeah.
I know they do good work.
They, they do. I, I, we've, uh, used them with the trees in the Vista Park, and, I mean, they pretty much told us what was gonna happen with that one over by the bathroom that is continuing to fall apart with the cones around it, so.
So did they both put in bids? Can we talk, can we put?
It was still old business, right?
You know how much, oh, they're open bids still?
No, okay, so the total amounts we received was sixty-five hundred dollars.
Oh, I see, so they're, they're going sixty-five hundred, okay.
Yeah. So I told you, what will you do for that amount of money?
Oh, okay, sorry, I didn't.
Yeah. No, you're fine.
Okay.
But yeah, so Capel, I, um, they said they will be checking it out within the next week or so, cuz I just talked to him, uh, beginning of this week.
Shouldn't they do it in, wait for winter, or, yeah?
Oh, actually, what I was, well, they said it depends on the trees and stuff, you know, fruit trees.
Okay, oh, they know the trees, yeah, but let the arborists do their job.
Right. But I wanna get this done and the paint possibly before, not September, but before we do the tours and stuff too.
And so that's the end of October.
The Halloween tours and all that, yeah, so fairly quick, really.
Yeah, if we could have all that done in two months, I'd be very pleased.
Yeah, and I think most tree trimming is better when they're dormant, or starting to when you, you, when you're supposed to.
It is, that's what I'm, I'm thinking, um, I'm just thinking those trees are so old and strong, but, um, yeah, major chopping is not good cuz then they're in the growth time, so they're putting all their juices out, and then that can, uh, leads more infection.
Yeah, they just bleed, you know, yeah.
They can get infected by other things, and we don't, I don't know, so.
It really is like an open wound. Anytime you trim a tree, it's a opening for a pair, something to get in there or.
Yeah.
So if you get that third bid, then what? Do we have to wait till?
I will say, no, no, at that point, once I have that, I'll take it to council.
Okay.
So, it'll go to council, so hopefully by the next time we meet, you guys will be coming and going, cemetery looks so much better with the trees chimed, so.
Good, okay.
And I will say, when I talked to Capel, he's like, I told him they were bidding, who had bid on it already, he's like, ah, I'm tired of being beat by By Faith Landscaping. He's like, ah, we'll, we'll look at it, since it's a little different with the bidding, but, so.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm guessing it'll be Jorge.
Okay, we're on item number three, the discussion on Bisbee Foundation donation amount and expenditures.
That, those other, um, the first topic, the tree trimming, that covers that, and then what was the other thing that they were, oh, the cemetery update, uh, the grave marking updates. So they are working on that, if, I'll go ahead and pull up the last one we had, because I think that had the information from May. If I remember what Dawn said, and she's, Dawn Beeks is the one that helps us out with the, um, the database for the graves. Yeah, so you know what, if anything, I mean, that money is, the last update I had was that they were gonna be taking a little bit longer cuz they had done some kind of major overhaul with how they did that system. So they're gonna be going through multiple different cemetery type sites or databases, so I think she was anticipating ours being done in July. I never followed up from that point to see if it was done. So I will go ahead and ask Lorena and Dawn if, if, uh, the electronic grave marking is all, if it's all updated or completed now.
Okay, that's it, that'll be interesting.
Yeah. So that one was spent, we spent that money, it was around four thousand, um, they gave us a good deal too, cuz they, they knew we were getting it from a nonprofit. And then the other sixty-five hundred from the Bisbee Foundation's for the trees to be trimmed, so.
Okay, awesome.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's good. Yeah, I picture eventually, with that, I think with that database, you'll be able to click on somebody's name, and then you can upload things to it too, like their obituary, and, um, you know, that would be what we could do with all the binders of, uh, that city.
Oh, man, yeah.
That's Joni's stuff.
That's, that's treasure, you know, history for a lot of decades.
Yeah. Mm-hmm.
Really cool.
Keep someone busy with some data info for a bit.
Would that be, would that be the city?
Yeah.
Um, probably, yeah, I mean.
Could a volunteer do it using the, the city's technology?
Yeah. Absolutely.
Cuz it'd be scanning, right? Scanning and uploading.
Who, uh, who does the records now? If I'm gonna bury someone tomorrow, where did, where does it go?
Lorena. Lorena Bell does, or admin there, yeah. And that's the other person, Dawn Beeks, she's, uh, she's the one who's very familiar with the database and, and helped get us to deal with the company. Lorena uses her a lot, she's, she lives in Vegas, but she used to be down, and she's very passionate, so she literally comes down and walks it and does everything.
I met her one time when I was at.
Out there?
I go a lot to my husband's grave, and, um, I met her, and she gave me her phone number, she was really nice, so.
She's, yeah, she's super good people.
Yeah, I was like, what?
We wouldn't have nearly as much done with her.
You don't want her to come back and visit, cuz you like this project?
Yeah.
Or she still has a five to zero number. The phone number's five to zero.
If she's ever here on one of our quarters, that'd be awesome to have her here.
I, I'll ask, I'll, I'll let her know the schedule, see if she wants to try and meet it, and do a call to public just to meet you guys.
And the more knowledge we have, the better we are.
Yes, I guarantee you, she'll give you more than me, she'll, she'll, she says.
Well, that would be fun.
Reach out to her with our, when we get our ske- next schedule.
Okay.
Even if she can't make it in person, maybe we could all just do a Zoom meeting one night?
Oh, there.
So she could then just join us via Zoom.
Yeah, absolutely.
I forget about Zoom.
Yeah, fine.
Okay, we're on to new business.
Quick note.
Item one, discussion and possible recommendation on no mow in May. I thought we discussed that in Spastik last.
Um, no, we had to put it on the agenda.
That's what we decided to do, okay.
Follow the open meeting law, so, uh.
We didn't mow in May.
And we're pretty lucky that's not a whole lot of growth in May, but, but it's good, cuz it gives those.
Well, we were gonna make a permanent, weren't we?
Yeah.
So what do we have to do?
Um, how does this sound? Um, I move that we make no mow May every year in, um, on perpetu- perpet-
Intuity.
Perpetuity. I wanna use a Latin word, but I can't think of what that means. So forever, no mow May.
Okay. Do I hear a second?
Yeah, it's not Latin, but indefinitely.
Second.
All opposed, I mean, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. Item number two. Here we go, discussion on painting, cemetery cleanup, Dia de los Muertos, wildflower seeds and mesquite removal.
Okay, uh, I'll speak to this, cuz I, I recognize my ideas on some of this.
Please.
So we've already talked about the painting. Cemetery cleanup, I've been, we've been throwing that around for a while, and, um, I had thought, um, cuz the Memorial Day and Veterans Day are, um, I don't know, Memorial Day is next May, right, and, uh, what was I getting at? Oh, um, what would be, what's more appropriate? Cuz then I started thinking about, well, uh, Day of the Dead is another time that people go and clean up and fix things up and make it look nice.
They do? In our cemetery?
I've seen a couple people there, families going and, you know, trimming, and, but, you know, I haven't sat there and taken data to really compare it, but yeah, um,
Good. No, I know.
For sure, uh, marigolds sell out around this time of year.
And that's another thing we've been ban, you know, feeding around and never getting to.
Yeah, so then.
We wanna do that around the same time that the, um, clean, the, uh, landscaping people come and chop everything down and everything, would we wanna do a cleanup around then?
Well, that was what I was like, um.
After they get rid of all our dead trees and.
Uh, here, Joni's calling, should I take this?
Yeah, you can take it.
Hey, Joni. Oh, sure, um, good, yeah, uh, she's here.
Oh.
Can you let her in?
She missed to call the public, we should come and sit.
Okay, so it'd be like a person sitting in the audience, right?
Right, she just won't be called up. Well, that's good.
Yeah.
Um, that, this cleanup is something that I've, you know, wanted, I mean, I've, I've got a trailer, if we could just get people.
Yeah, um, I had, I envisioned like one of those days, um, being there and then other people cleaning up. You know, people there are cleaning up anyways, so they would be there and say, okay, here's the city, here's rakes, here's, um, uh, you know, we'll haul your stuff away, clean your family's plot, here's trimmers, here's shovels, um, I, and then I could get free wildflower seeds from Bisbee numbers.
Or Bisbee Wildlife Group.
I think the old back for us was always, we have to have people sign a waiver. They can't work there unless they sign a waiver, is what we were, we've been told.
Yeah, let me ask about, can I ask about the waiver? How they changed it?
I think you can actually participate in this meeting.
Oh, sorry, oh, sorry.
I'm sorry.
That's okay, cuz.
Yeah, um, yes, there is a volunteer form that needs to be filled out before anybody can, for insurance purposes.
So we would have to have someone at the gate filling out these forms so people could come in and work.
Right, well, and that's the thing too, it's like, I, I actually think it needs to be handed into the city beforehand, so they can get underworkman's call.
That's been our, that's been our.
Yeah, so that's the problem, is collecting.
Okay, yeah, that's a lot. We can move on. I mean, I don't, I don't know how to.
We don't know how to get around this.
I can't envision.
Um, we could, remember, Bisbee Foundation has money that they will allot to us every year.
The community cleaning up the cemetery.
I'll pull up the documentation, share it next time, but it's a certain amount of money, it's not crazy, we got that bigger chunk because we missed it for a few years. But we could get a lot done with Verhust. I mean, a couple thousand dollars in Verhust.
They charge a lot an hour, don't they?
No.
I thought they charged like eighteen an hour.
It's only a dollar. It's, it's the next step up from DOC, in my opinion.
Oh.
So, I mean, those guys are halfway house or whatnot, but that, I think, would be another good option for really getting things cleaned up, you know, outside of.
Although it's been, I've gotta say, you, you guys have been doing very well, I think.
Oh, thank you, I'm glad, cuz I went through there today, and I'm like, gosh, she's monster, it's just blew it up.
Well, today I didn't, yeah, I didn't go today, but.
Everybody's yard has gone up three inches in like five days.
Every place.
Yes.
Yeah, seriously.
Um, so, would DOC though make, uh, financially more sense, or, or, I'm not sure how they book out, I should know that, but I don't know how.
DOC?
Yeah.
We can use them anytime, we, they're on our, and I use them to keep them clean, but if you guys are talking like, you know, specifically on the grave sites or something.
Yeah, you know, we're, there's broken glass out there, there's, um, people are putting bases out there and they're, you know.
I know. The thing about our cemetery too is when you buy the plot, you're literally owning the land, so it's like private property in a way. So like, somebody going and doing maintenance on it, or filling it with a hole, the girl said we used to do that, and I'm gonna look into it, but my understanding from my reading is that the type of cemetery we have is no maintenance, like, as far as that goes, you're responsible for the plot.
Yeah.
Which we, we really, I mean, it's kinda obvious, it's like that.
Cuz when the family's dead.
But, you know, it's real hard for people to realize, you know, you've gotta lift your headstone up, it just sunk a foot.
I know.
Or there's a badger living in your grave.
There's some squirrels out there for sure.
You can't, like, you know, I, I, I used, like, these mesquite trees, if, you know, over a hun- like, two hundred years from now, it would just, might just be a mesquite bost, like, you know, they're just, they kind of, um, so, but in my mind was like, they need to be pulled out, but you can't just go do that on somebody's plot, cuz they own that.
Yeah, exactly. Uh, we did take down a tree that fell down on somebody's plot, but it was, they were from eighteen ninety-something, something, I think we'll be okay.
Someone else has planted cancer trees on somebody's plot. There are cancer trees.
Like planted, intentionally?
Yes, they're like all over this one grave.
Oh, no.
They'll take over.
They did, they have.
So that'd be interesting, um, research legally, what can we do and what can't we do?
Yeah.
Because, you know, technically that guy was, you know, what makes the difference between a diacksel and being dead a hundred years and being dead fifty years?
And it's going to impact the neighbor's property, so to speak, and potentially damage it through roots or what, droppings, whatever.
And, well, and even like, I have a mesquite tree growing on my plot that I want it to leave, I wanna leave it, cuz I want it to be a big shade tree later, but what, how does that affect the people around me?
Yeah, they got a huge footprint, I don't know.
You know, like legally, that, these are all kinds of legal questions.
And that's what I've talked to, I, I talked to, um, the Catholic Diocese people, telling them that, you know, you're in charge of your Catholic section of the, of the cemetery, and I talked to, I think it was the masons or the, it's one of those, and said, you know, can you go and look at your section and maintain it, do some maintenance on it? And I never heard back from anybody, but maybe if we sent out a mailing to each of our section leaders, or whatever you would call them, the owners of the section, you know?
Yeah.
I wonder if that would do us any good.
Hmm.
Okay, did tell me that in a two, a cemetery tour in New Orleans, it was the Oddfellows Cemetery, it was really interesting, and he said that that is one of their creeds, is to take care of their kin's graves, so.
Well, look at the surveying area over there, it's, it's very nice, they're really, but they've got a contractor that does it, so.
Oh, yeah.
On their section, so. Well, that's, that's another thing we're throwing, throwing around here.
So to get back to your original, you were saying either Verhust or potentially DOC?
Oh, I mean, yeah, cuz you're talking about discussing on painting, cemetery cleanup. We can use DOC for a lot of this, I mean, that's how we take care of the cemetery and everything, we, I haven't had them do any painting or anything like that, but, um, we absolutely can use DOC, and then if there's additional cleaning up or something, I, we could use Verhust, but really, I don't think it'd be necessary if we have DOC.
Okay.
They really can't do much different stuff.
Yeah, just weed whacking, you mean, or?
Pretty much, yeah. We could have them paint too, DOC could do that if we get in the stuff.
Mowing.
And I know the cost might be not that much of a difference, well, actually, there is a big difference, which we, yeah, my husband used to be in charge of workers, so, yeah.
It's really cheaper.
So the way I'm thinking is if we can save even, you know, a hundred dollars that can then go towards like a columbarium or anything else, then we should try to save as much money as possible.
I agree, yeah. Yeah, so we'll stick with DOC for the cleaning and stuff and.
And you mentioned the wildflower seeds, but it says mesquite removal, is that a real? And you mentioned the wildflower seeds, but it says mesquite removal, is that a real big?
That was just like the same thing I just asked, these were all just, I get that email and I'm like, oh, put it on the agenda, we can't talk about it. And I don't have the minutes in front of me, so I don't remember what we already did, and then it's like half a minute, it's old as shit. So I just was like, get it on there.
Yeah.
And usually I forget.
I think it's.
I don't do it in time, but, so that's, takes care too, and you can scratch out four too, cause four related to everything we already talked about.
Uh, arbor?
Arborists.
Yeah. So By Faith Landscaping, they are professional arborists. So is Capel, I do not know if Luke is actually, uh, officially an arborist.
Yeah, just.
I mean, yeah, I don't think so. I mean, he's got the experience for sure, but.
No, he's probably fine, it's, it's been a long time, and I, I, you know, he must be real busy.
Station training.
When I talked to him, he sounded like he at least knew what, about the Piper trees we had there, the cypress and all that.
Yeah.
Okay, so we're, we're now at number three.
Yep.
Discussion on Halloween tours, pre-planning meetings.
So I'm thinking of what, when could you guys get together?
No.
And, and you wouldn't have, you know, you don't, you don't have to come if you're, if you're still living up in New York, so.
Oh, but I go back.
Okay. Okay.
Joni, oop, I almost brought you into the meeting, sorry.
So maybe.
Of course, you know, I want to.
Um, can Lorena send an email then and start getting all of our information when we can meet for a special session? And then let's just look at the calendar, how soon before we need to meet? Um, so we're probably gonna have these around Halloween or, so let's say, um, mid-October.
I will do my best, I have two very big events coming up.
I know, this is the busiest time, you're right, um, yeah, there's a lot going on.
Yeah. Yeah. We're, we're co-hosting the Mariachi Festival this year too, so, um.
So what are those dates?
So, I, well, my, one of my first event is on October twelfth, so that means for at least the whole week before I'm.
So the end of September?
How about end, end of September?
Yeah, we can try.
Okay. And then, uh, yeah, and if you could note that to ask Lorena to, that we need to meet by the end of s-
Before the end of September.
Before the end of September.
Yeah, September should be good for me at this point, but.
Me too.
Yeah, I think sooner is always better, cause only us, though, that time of year just whams us.
Yeah, and then it's, uh, for a work session too, so we can.
Make it longer or.
And have a little more open discussion, and if you guys wanna bring your books in and. Are you gonna use the same kind of, um, tours you did before, or are you gonna look to mix it up?
I can't, I don't know, we got, we'll have to talk about that at the meeting, I'm assuming, these are really good.
Cause Marisol said something, we did the last one online, right? Everybody ordered their tickets online.
Oh, did, yeah, vent break, yeah, I think.
Um.
Purple paths, I think.
Po- was it, was it? Head nods, there you go.
And is, is, um, is it a, yes or no?
Yeah. Okay, so we'll go ahead and get, um, the fours off, so September, we'll ask to have a work session. And then probably play by ear from that session for the next one.
Yeah, I, I don't think it's gonna be a whole lot, I know that, um, Joni was very organized and kept stuff in boxes and it's just gonna be a matter of getting the kids. You know, hopefully some of the same kids, so it'll be better, and, um, if we're short of tour guide, I would even step to the plate.
I?
It's kinda fun.
It's kinda fun, yeah.
I like, it would be, actually, um, standing with a flashlight is fun, you know, I'll help, I'll be there that night regardless, but, uh.
Anything else, we can go to member comments?
Okay. So in, I think that meeting will be, yeah, sh- September's good, and then if we meet, have to meet again, we can meet again. And it, like, if you get busy, you know, it'll, Marisol will be involved too, we'll, we'll figure it out. Um, member comments, I don't have anymore, just.
This is crazy outside, it's gonna be crazy. The storm is.
Yeah, I just, I've been watching it come this way.
I'm on a Volkswagen, that's not good.
No.
Probably left a convertible now.
Okay, um, yeah, so I'm gonna have to keep that top up. Um, staff comments?
Um, what was it we were gonna discuss on staff?
Okay, go back a little.
Yeah.
Uh, oh, um, the columbarium.
Columbarium, yeah.
The investigation you did.
Oh, should, member comments, I'm gonna do yours first.
Yeah.
Do you want to discuss anything further, only found out about that columbarium, that's a good spot.
Only just that she said it was between thirty and forty thousand, they found one in the nation and it was out of Maryland.
And it was sixty units, so is that like a unit for one little slot?
Sixty niches, yeah, six per, yeah.
Man, that's like kinda spunky.
Sixty people.
Actually, it's like sixty shoeboxes for forty thousand.
Well, I.
Yeah, I don't know if it's marble, I'm sure it probably is.
I'm sure it's very nice, yeah.
I'd like to, um, yeah, just to study it, what's like the basic thing that you need, cause I thought, wasn't it, um, some person here that is on, maybe on the Bisbee, um.
Foundation, John Charlie?
Family, John Charlie, he, like, could, ha- what was, does he know about it?
Yeah, he, so he had a.
Like, do we have to go with a company, or can we just have someone build it, is it just like blocks that have a sh- a really
Yeah. Right.
strong shelf, you know, a drawer, or it can be closed and locked?
Oh, lo- exactly, that's what he was thinking, and doing the nice like desert, um, like boulders and having built into it on the side or something.
So boulders sound really cool, but I wanted to show you guys a picture of, on, uh, it's been there for a while, um, it's called Stonehedge. It's on the Rito River Pass in Tucson, you know, the bike trail that goes all around, so along the Rito River on the north side. It's, um, way northwest, um, and, uh, some landscape design person designed it.
Like river road.
It's so cool, cause it's, it's all round and, um, it's, so, and it, so it makes it like you can fit like thirty or forty people in bent. You just sat in a circle, but it's all, um, that the cement pad it's on has different, um, texture. And it goes with north, southeast and west, and then on the back walls, there's slits that come through, and then that's also textured. So you can follow on the sol- the solstice, the sunlight will come through there and, um, light it up. You know, so on the, four times of the year, the sol- the winter and summer solstice and the equinox, it's, you can, it actually, um,
Wow.
lights a path across the thing, so to me, I just like that, cause it's like, um, o- otherworldly, it takes you out into space.
Makes you think of lines.
Well, we also, that's something else we should, we've got a company where we can order it, and we should probably talk to, um, contractors.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, exactly, so maybe this design, um, person's like, oh, you can have it, it's for a cemetery, it's free, take this on.
So there it is, because he builds everything for the Serbs, nature, Serbian se- section, maybe he, you know, can.
Cause that's what I thought, these are just blocks, and, you know, that would, how neat, that would be if the drawers were there, cause I saw columbariums, that would just be monoliths, you know, they're pretty, but I thought, this is neat, cause it, it was, it's, it could be against that wall, the hill part too. And then if we need to grow out, we just put, you know, the side is wall, you could just expand those circles.
Gotcha, yeah, it's like a honeycomb almost.
That's cool.
Well, called it, this woman couldn't give me any more information because she couldn't get her computer up there. I'll see what she can give me and what, what kind of, I was hoping they did this research for us.
Yeah, exactly.
Cause they've already ordered it.
And, and then if they start building theirs, let's go over there and look.
And look at it, yes.
Cause that's the other part of that, I'm thinking, well then, what can, what kind of material do you need, it's super strong, want it to last, maybe a hundred years or so, yeah.
That's it, come and fill.
I wonder if there's a company that does this stuff specifically, I mean, it's not just the design and all that too, it's like, what does one of those spots cost?
There are several out there, but they only did like four niches or six niches, not, you know, sixty.
Yeah.
You know? Sixty, yeah.
Cause I looked through the smaller ones and they didn't, you know, get bigger. So future items for discussion?
Um.
Col- oh, you, you need to have, what'll be calling this? Columbarium committee, colum- columbarium workings, working session?
Session, work session.
Work sessions, columbarium work sessions, future.
So that's future, yeah, on, ongoing scheduling of those ongoing work sessions. And, um, what else is future item? Yeah, um, the tour, okay, tour, cause we're gonna meet on November seven, so we need to say the debrief of the tour. Assuming we have the tour before the seventh.
November or October?
November.
November, as of what?
Yeah, so this is new business for the November seventh meeting will be a deep, a discussion of our t- of the tour.
Yes, and debrief, yeah, I see, why not?
The next regular meeting we have is November seventh.
Dang.
So, I was marking on, is that it?
I think so, so just for future items, scheduling of columbarium work sessions, and.
Um, deep, uh, debrief of Halloween tour.
Debrief of Halloween tour, yeah.
Sanitary tour.
Cemetery, good call. We'll get specific. Unless we guys want to, we can.
Sanitary tour fundraiser.
So, who's the jury and all that good stuff?
Okay. I move we close, end this meeting. Advert.
Meeting adjourned.
That was my hangar.
Your gate done?
Well done.
Six twenty-nine.
So you're done?
Yes.
So ask Joe how I can.